Use it. But you know, because then you do have some structure that doesn't have it. But thank you because you're right. But I don't know, you keep on everything. But I hear you. But I've heard that before, so thank you. But I've heard that before, so thank you.
Good morning, everyone. It is now ten o'clock, and I ask that you would please join me for the invocation, and then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. So if you would stand, please. Father God, we just thank you for this day to be in your presence and all that it is. We ask that you can continue to remain with us and grant us wisdom and guidance in all that we do as we serve your people. We do continue to pray for peace in this land and throughout this nation and this world. In all that agree, in Jesus's name, please say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, and equal to liberty and justice for all."
Good morning, and we are now calling the special meeting today to order. Today, again, is the purpose is to have a meeting regarding the public hearing of the 2019-2020 millage rate. And this has been published as our agenda for the day. I now open the floor for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussions? All in favor? Okay, five to zero. Thank you. The agenda will move as published. The purpose of the public hearing today is that by law, if the governing body is contemplating increasing property taxes, three public hearings are to be held to allow public input. We have had two public hearings to date, on June sixteenth, one that was at nine o'clock a.m., and the other one at six o'clock p.m. This will be our third and final meeting where we will invite citizens to come forward for public comment, and after that, we will move forward with a vote on the millage rate. Now, this constitutes now a public hearing. I now call our county manager, Sherri Hobson Matthews, and staff forward to give our presentation. And afterwards, each citizen will be allowed up to three minutes each for public comment. I now yield the floor to the county manager.
Good morning, Chair and board members. As Sherwood has indicated, this is the final public hearing as required by law as the Board of Commissioners is contemplating a tax increase. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had two public hearings, and within those public hearings, staff did present to the Board some initial numbers and also recommended to the Board that in lieu of us moving forward with the twelve point nine nine five millage rate increase, that we felt that we could currently, or we could maintain the current level at the twelve point seven three three. Just as a recap, for those that may be new to the audience or for the Board, when we initially approved our budget back in May, one of the things that the Board contemplated was increasing the number of staffing positions for our public safety teams, specifically our police department. And after much discussion with staff and with our financial services team, we determined that that would equate to about a point two five millage rate increase, which is why we were looking to initially increase the millage rate. After our tax digest numbers came back, staff was able to work with our tax assessors and tax commissioners office and determine that we did see a much greater growth rate than we initially had projected. And we felt that with the twelve point seven three three, we would be able to continue to operate under the budget that was approved by the Board. Before I turn it over to our tax commissioner, I do want to go over a couple of things with the Board, just because we did initially advertise the twelve point nine nine five. And if there's any questions that the Board may have, I do want to be able to answer those questions. I will try to read it to you. So I won't read all the numbers, but I do apologize for the display. So again, we have three numbers that were being, or at least two numbers that were being considered. The twelve point seven three three, which is our current millage rate, and then the proposed twelve point nine nine five. I'll ask the Board to remember that for property tax collections, we are projecting a collection rate of about ninety-two million eight sixty-nine. So on the overhead, I'm showing you all what the millage rate would have to be to get that collection number, which will be twelve point seven five five, which is not what we're recommending. We're recommending the twelve point seven three three because it will equate to about ninety-two million seven hundred and four thousand dollars. And so we're looking at about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty million dollar gap that we are able to fill within our current projections and within our current numbers. So again, this morning, we are recommending that the Board of Commissioners approves this resolution, which you all should have a copy of, setting the county millage rate at twelve point seven three three. At this time, I'll turn it over to our tax commissioner. I know there's been several questions from Board members and from citizens regarding the frozen exemption. And so Mr. Harris is going to come up and kind of walk the Board through that and provide some examples in terms of what you can expect to see on your tax bill as a result of the millage rate being maintained at the twelve point seven three three. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris or wait for any questions from the Board.
Okay, we'll go ahead and accept questions. Commissioner Thomas?
I just wanted to make sure I heard you correct. You said the gap was a hundred and...
About a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, I thought you said millions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said millions.
So sorry, no ma'am, a hundred and sixty-three thousand. I do apologize. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I was trying to make sure you all were listening this morning. I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris if there's no other questions.
Very good, thank you. Good question. Clarification.
Yes, I just thought it was part of yours. Let me get out of your way. I can go to the other one. Okay. Okay. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Pleasure to be back with you again. I'm going to be relatively brief. I know we've gone through the presentation a few times, but for the sake of those who haven't had the pleasure of seeing this previously, I did want to go through some of the basic principles, kind of a summary of what we've discussed previously. And again, just real quickly, millage rate, this is the rates that are used. Millage rates are the tax rates used to calculate local property taxes, which is what we're discussing today. The rate represents an amount for homeowner has to pay for every one thousand dollars of a property's assessed value. The assessed value includes both structure and the land on which it sits. So that's your home, the land, and any other structures, pools, or any accessory structures. The fair market value is determined by the tax assessor's office. The tax assessor's office mails assessment notices in April, and taxpayers have forty-five days to appeal any assessed values. The assessed value differs obviously from the fair market value in that the assessed value is calculated by multiplying the assessed fair market value by forty percent, and that gives you your assessed value, or what you're taxed on, the amount you're taxed on. Your taxable value will be the assessed value minus any exemptions that would apply, times your mill rate, which would be established, and that will equal your taxes that are due. We'll get a little bit further into exemptions in just a moment. I want to jump right to this slide. This is the one that County Manager, Ms. Sherri Hobson Matthews, just mentioned briefly a second ago. So this is, again, contemplating the three different millage rates that were discussed previously, the twelve point nine nine five, twelve point seven five five, and what's being proposed today, twelve point seven three three, which equates to a no change in the actual millage rate. So this is taking a home valued at two hundred thousand dollars, times your forty percent, which gives you an eighty percent assessed value, in this case, minus, again, this is assuming that they have their homestead exemption, their L-one homestead, so you subtract the fifteen thousand, so again, it's sixty-five thousand. That's the same for all, because again, the process and the formula stays the same. So the only thing that differs in this case would simply be with that millage rate, that multiplier would be. So it'd be either the twelve point nine nine percent, the twelve point seven five five, or the twelve point seven three three. And as you can see, it steps down based on the reduction of the millage rate. So based on a two hundred thousand dollar home, a homeowner with an L-one exemption would be looking at a county tax, just from the Henry County tax, of eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Again, that does not include the school board. Sure. Trying to lean over a little bit. And again, as I mentioned, I think this has been also been handed out. County Manager made a copy for everyone, which is to give everybody a snapshot of how those taxes are distributed. As noted from the previous example, that tax amount would be for the county government, which shows a thirty-seven percent for county government. The school MNO is maintenance and operations, is also a school bond of eight percent. So fifty-eight percent of the tax is collected actually goes toward our school system, and remaining five percent will go to our water authority bond. So again, that just gives you a quick snapshot of how taxes that are collected, how they're distributed throughout the county. And the process we're here for today is the setting of the millage rate. And again, once again, relatively simple formula, budget that's been established, Ms. Hobson Matthews spoke about. Once the budget's been established by the Board of Commissioners, you take that number divided by the net assessed value that's been determined by our chief appraiser, Mr. John Self, who's also here today, and that gives you your millage rate. So this is what we're looking at. So we've used a millage rate of twelve point seven seven three, and as stated by Ms. Hobson Matthews, that kind of tells you what that number would yield in relation to the budget that's been passed already by the Board of Commissioners. So that's how the numbers correlate. So that's really the gist of the process that we've gone through. What I did want to touch base a little bit on is the exemptions that are offered here in Henry County. This list provides a detailed breakdown of all the different exemptions that exist in Henry County, starting with our basic homestead, a fifteen thousand, and then you have a disability homestead, also fifteen thousand, disabled veterans, that amount changes, we're giving that amount by the state every year. And you have various stepped age exemptions. When you reach the age of sixty-two, exemptions increase, sixty-five, it increases again, sixty-eight, and seventy, and those are deducted from the school taxes only. So when you reach the age of seventy, you are no longer paying any school taxes. But beginning at the age of sixty-two, your school taxes are reduced based on a set amount. Those don't impact the other homestead. So the point to make here is that the homestead does not impact your school taxes. It impacts your county taxes, but not your school taxes. Those exemptions begin at the age of sixty-two. So one of the issues I really wanted to speak about was the frozen exemption. There's been a lot of conversation about frozen, and how it works, how it impacts individuals. Our property tax director, Ms. Lynn Carty, provided this example previously, which speaks to a home that was assessed with a fair market value of two hundred thousand in twenty sixteen, and where that value has increased to three hundred thousand in twenty nineteen. You take the forty percent, gives you an assessed value of eighty thousand in twenty sixteen. That being the base year, so we're taking the assumption that this was the year the home was purchased, or the year that the exemption, that the L-one exemption was applied for. That's when it applies for. So if the base year is two thousand and sixteen... Am I saying it right? This is the base year of twenty sixteen, right?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, right. So in twenty sixteen, they may have purchased the house in twenty seventeen, they applied for their homestead. So in twenty nineteen, when the assessed value has now gone up to three hundred thousand, that exemption amount, rather being fifteen, the base level of fifteen thousand, now they're only, while the house is valued at three hundred thousand, they're only assessed based on a two hundred thousand valuation because their property value has been frozen at that two hundred thousand. That's why the exemption is that much higher, because you're accounting for the additional cost in the change in value. But in this case, while the fair market value is now three hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars higher, you are only being assessed on the county side for a home assessed at two hundred thousand. So you see how the county tax stays frozen at eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Some of the questions I've had over the course of the last couple of weeks since we did this first presentation were that people have contacted our office and others saying that, well, they've noticed increases in their property tax on their county side, and how could that be? Just a little bit of brief history as relates to the frozen exemption policy. It actually began, and it was voted on, and legislation came up in two thousand and four, and went into effect in two thousand and five. So if someone bought their house, purchased their house in nineteen ninety-nine, they had to establish a base year. So in that case, the base year was two thousand and five. If you purchased your house in two thousand and ten, and you applied for your homestead in two thousand and ten, then your base year would be two thousand and ten, and you would see that frozen exemption applied that following year. But what's happened in a lot of cases is someone bought their home in nineteen ninety-nine, and the value was steadily going up, as we know during those times, during the boom years, values of home properties were going up. And I think what happened was, the whole premise of establishing the homestead provision was the Commissioners at the time, Chairman Jason Harper, recognized that there was a concern amongst some of our senior population where they were seeing their home values steadily rise, and, you know, they were on fixed income, so it was difficult for them to be able to make those payments. So they brought forward the frozen provision, which said they'll establish a base year two thousand and five, if you already owned your home, and whatever your value was in two thousand and five, your fair market value, it would stay frozen at that amount, and so it could not be assessed at a higher value, as long as there were no improvements that were made, or the millage didn't change. Those things would, if millage changed, obviously you'd have to still pay the additional millage. So that worked out perfect for them. However, as we all know, back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we had the recession, and at that point, values decreased. I wanted to provide this graphic as well. I shared this at the last meeting as well, which talks about, which shows the county values back in two thousand and eight, six point seven billion, and how they steadily decreased over the next few years. And it wasn't until two thousand and eighteen, in the year two thousand and eighteen, where we see the value getting back to that original two thousand and eight value. Two thousand and eighteen, we crested back at just slightly above seven point one billion. So for that ten-year period, we saw value, or for the five-year period, we saw values consistently drop off, and then back in two thousand and fourteen, we saw values begin to start picking back up again. And that was often the case with a number of people's homes. The values that were in two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and five were considerably higher than they were in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. So what you saw in a lot of cases where the established value, so in two thousand, if in two thousand and five, your home was valued at a hundred and fifty thousand, and then in two thousand and twelve, it was valued at a hundred thousand because the values went down so low, and then in two thousand and fourteen, you started seeing those values. And again, during those times, you were only assessed based on the actual value. So you weren't assessed at, you know, you're frozen at a hundred and fifty thousand. You were assessed, but you were valued at a hundred thousand, you were assessed at that hundred thousand value. It didn't work in the reverse, so you weren't capped at, you weren't still assessed at that higher value. You were assessed at the lower value. But once the value gets above the base value of a hundred and fifty, then it would be frozen. That's when you realize the frozen amount. So in a lot of cases that I spoke with folks, that was the issue. Their value had gone down below their base year, and so they were steadily seeing some increases. It'll continue to increase until such time that you get back up to your, whatever your base year assessed value was. So that's been the differential. And so I want to kind of help, just kind of explain that piece of it. And again, it does not apply, if you've gone through and added a pool, or added any kind of other improvements, finished your basement, wouldn't apply in those cases, or if there was a millage increase, if the millage actually did increase, that increase would still be assessed at the new, your value would still be assessed at that new millage rate. So hopefully that explains and clears up any other questions as it relates specifically to the frozen provision. Would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Any comments? I have one that I'd like to save a go.
I'll go ahead. Will you clarify also that this frozen millage really only applies to the county portion as well? Will you clarify that for those that are viewing? Meaning that, if you go back to the pie chart that shows the distribution, you know, of the millage rate per se by percentages, but if you'll, as you speak about the frozen, speak more about where that really is applied, just to clarify.
Right, so as stated, the frozen provision only applies to the county government tax portion, not the school board tax portion. So if your value has increased, that valuation, that increase in that valuation would still be seen on the school board side. And plus, yeah, ours and the water authority as well, county as well as water. So though thirty-seven plus a five, so that forty-two percent would be subject to the frozen. The remaining forty-eight percent would not be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Clemens, and then we'll go to Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I know that one of the line items that we had of the different amounts that we were proposing to raise the taxes went from about seventeen dollars up to the highest point. Can you put the slide up that has the different millage rates, the twelve point seven three three and the other ones? It's a handout that we gave to the citizens this morning. So I've been spending a lot of time with constituents explaining that our present millage rate is the far-right corner, which is the twelve point seven three three. So the two hundred thousand dollar household is eight twenty-seven. Had the Board decided to vote to raise it to the twelve point nine nine five, it would have only been a seventeen dollar more a year for their taxes.
On the county side.
On the county side.
Correct.
So I know that when you sent out the tax bills, I don't know if it's possible, but it would be helpful if something went out in that envelope with the citizens' information to say, this is what your, the millage rate is, and, you know, these are the proposed rates that it could be. Because the education piece is so huge, and I think it needs to come from the taxpayers' office. So even if it's not in their bill, there needs to be some form, even if it's on the website, that the citizens can go to to be better educated. I've heard many citizens say, had I known I was only going to pay seventeen dollars more or thirty dollars more for my taxes over a year to have more road repairs or more police officers, I wouldn't have been at the meeting talking about why are you raising taxes. So I think that we have to make sure that we're educating the community, and it needs to come from probably the taxpayers' office on that.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, and we've actually talked internally about doing some additional outreach efforts, you know, in particular as it relates to frozen. Frozen's been in place for roughly fifteen years, but this year it became a strong talking point. So we want to make sure we get that information out to our residents. But to that point, we will, we will be doing some additional things, getting additional information out there. But I want to make sure it's clear that, I don't want to be disingenuous towards our citizens, that that amount applies to the county tax portion. Again, you're talking about that thirty at forty-two percent, as opposed to there will be additional increases on the county school board side.
Right, right. And they never go to the school board meeting and ask about the raising of the taxes. They only come here. So it's important that we do our part. And then the other thing was, on the tax increase for the water authority, you know, they want to know why they're paying extra money for water authority instead of the government, and why is that separate? So just some education pieces that I think that we need to definitely look into.
Well, again, on the water authority, their millage amount is set at two mils. Right, so there, any increases on that portion would be based on, again, in this case, like we was talking about earlier, would be based on the valuation of the properties. And that's what we're seeing right now. We're seeing those increases in valuation with the rate being the same, and go back to the same formula. You know, you determine that tax bill based on your assessed value, times your rate will determine your tax bill. If the rate stays the same, then it's all determined upon how those assessed values are determined. If our overall, if your assessed value goes down, then your tax bill's going to go down with the rate being the same. If your tax bill, if your assessed value goes up, then your tax bill's going to go up. And this year, we've seen, you know, which is overall a good thing. We want to see, you know, values increasing in the community. So we're seeing an increase in our values and our growth as well.
And I think the citizens need to also know that we're operating out of about a hundred and sixty million dollar budget average. And we've been operating out of that same amount for some time. And I know that citizens are constantly asking for more public safety, more road improvements, more stripings, and we're not getting any more money. So I had to say to a citizen this morning, you know, if you call me and say, I want my roads paved, I want streetlights, and then the next month you call me saying, but don't raise taxes, it just, at some point, we have to decide, you know, when do we get to the point as a county that we don't mind paying the extra thirty dollars a year or fifty dollars a year to add seventeen million dollars more and hold the Board accountable to how they're going to spend that seventeen million more dollars? And that's what we got to get to educate in our community. Because if we talk about Cobb County, I think we put it out, I put it out this morning, that we're talking about Cobb County, who has a budget of two hundred and fifty-four million dollars. Actually, their budget is four hundred million dollars. They increased, and they got two hundred million more. And Henry County is still operating out of the same one hundred and sixty million dollars, and people need more, our quality of life needs to be better, but we're not getting any more money. So I just wanted to make sure that our citizens look at that as well.
All right, Commissioner Thomas?
Just as a follow-up, because Commissioner Clemens mentioned some of the things I think we definitely need to do. And one of the things I wanted to stress is about the school board. When they see a tax increase, they automatically assume all of them are coming from the county. They never really take the time to see where is it coming from. So as she stated, we do need to take time and educate our citizens. And I'd like to see you work with our communications department to make sure that's done. That would be something worth seeing in some of our circulas that are going out internally and externally, so people will know how to read it, where tax increases are coming from. And again, just sitting here, most citizens assume if there's a school tax increase, it's coming from us and not from the school board. There again, we are responsible for telling and putting out our own story correctly, so people will know exactly what we are doing here as county commissioners. Another thing I wanted to ask, the frozen exemption, is that something someone must apply for? Is it automatically done? How is that instituted?
Yeah, great, great, great question. No, once you apply for your original homestead, your automatically, homestead automatically is applied to your property. So there's not a separate provision you have to go through. You do have to do your initial homestead application through the tax assessor's office. But once you do that, again, the law was passed, legislation was passed back in two thousand and five, so you're automatically, automatically you get to realize that frozen provision. So there's not an additional step in that case, so that's a good question.
Again, that is something wonderful to know, and that's something the citizens would like to know. And we need to find a way to communicate that effectively to the people in our county, that they don't have to go an extra step to make this happen. And you know what? You have a lot of new homeowners that's coming to Henry County, so some of this stuff is new to them anyway. Just getting through the mortgage process can be a drooling task, and then to turn around and figure out what are my taxes doing is another drooling task. So thank you so much for considering what we're saying about educating people here. We want them to know how their taxes are being spent. We also want them to know that it's not your county commissioner. raise taxes. It just, at, at some point, we have to decide, you know, when do we get to the point as, as a county, that we don't mind paying the extra $30 a year or $50 a year to add $17 million more and hold the board accountable to how they're going to spend that 17 million more dollars? And that's what we got to get to educating our community. Because if we talk about Cobb County, I think we, we put it out, I put it out this morning, that we're talking about Cobb County who has a budget of $254 million. Actually, their budget is $400 million. They increased, and they got 200 million more. And Henry County is still operating out of the same $160 million, and people need more. Our quality of life needs to be better, but we're not getting any more money. So just wanted to make sure that our citizens look at that as well.
All right. Commissioner Thomas?
Just as a follow-up, because Commissioner Clemens mentioned some of the things I think we definitely need to do. And one of the things I wanted to stress is about the school board. When they see a tax increase, they automatically assume all of them are coming from the county. They never really take the time to see where it is, where is it coming from? So as she stated, we do need to take time and educate our citizens. And I'd like to see you work with our communications department to make sure that's done. That would be something worth seeing in some of our circulars that are going out internally and externally, so people will know how to read it, where tax increases are coming from. And again, just sitting here, most citizens assume if there's a school tax increase, it's coming from us and not from the school board. There again, we are responsible for telling and putting out our own story correctly, so people will know exactly what we are doing here as county commissioners. Another thing I wanted to ask, the, the frozen exemption, is that something someone must apply for? Is it automatically done? How is that instituted?
Yeah, great, great, great question. No, once you apply for your original homestead, your automatically, homestead automatically is, is, is applied to your property. So you, there's not a separate provision you have to go through. You do have to do your initial homestead exempt, homestead application through the tax assessor's office. But once you do that, again, the law was passed, legislation was passed back in 2005, so you're automatically, you get, automatically you get to realize that, that frozen provision. So there's not an additional step in that case, so it's a good question.
Again, that is something wonderful to know, and that's something the citizens would like to know. And we need to find a way to communicate that effectively to the people in our county, that they don't have to go an extra step to make this happen. And you know what? You have a lot of new homeowners that's coming to Henry County, so some of this stuff is new to them anyway. Just getting through the mortgage process can be a, a drooling task. And then to turn around and figure out what are my taxes doing is another drooling task. So thank you so much for considering what we're saying about educating people here. We want them to know how their taxes are being spent. We also want them to know that it's not your county commissioners that's causing other increases in other areas. So thank you so much.
Yes, and nor is it, nor is it the county tax commissioner. But, but to that point, and you bring up a great point. On our, our, our website, henrytc.org, there's a number, there's a wealth of information, including our annual report, which will be, we'll be putting that out in the next couple of months. You'll see that information. That'll encapsulate all of the information throughout the course of the year, all of our statistics. And also, you bring up a really good point as far as new homeowners coming into our county to buy the new home. What we do is we offer a property taxes, your rights and responsibilities, and this has all the information, contact information, your rights and responsibilities as it relates, as a section specifically about your, how to go through the homestead application process. I, I grabbed a couple today for those that are in the audience today. I'll leave a stack here. But again, this information is mailed out to everyone. We have it in each one of our offices as well. So that's always been our charge. We want to make sure we get the information out for citizens so they have a clear understanding of what they can do, what their rights are. And again, every opportunity that I get, I want to make sure I'm encouraging homeowners to file for their homestead exemptions, because it is, it is a tremendous track, tax break.
Okay. I mean, you still have the floor?
As a follow-up to that, thank you for having the brochures available, and I know that you're doing what you can. And there again, I want to mention, please take advantage of our communication department, who should be helping all of the departments get information out to citizens. But as, as it applies to homeowners, I would love to see someone, be it you or another department, I won't keep harping on it, build an alliance with the developers that are building, which builds an alliance with the real estate people that are there. So on their brochure, their brochure, we can put links there and information there that can easily go out the instant they buy their homes, or the instant they start looking at their homes. And it may take an excess burden off of you trying to print that so much, because it's already there. That's, that's just building an alliance with realtors and real estate people and developers to put it on their brochures that they have in place. We just need to reach out a little bit beyond where we are and get outside the box and do some work.
Yeah, again, we're always open, you know, partner with any organization out there. And I would, I do want to say that our annual report, we do work in conjunction with Melissa Robinson and our communications department here, and they've been a great partner, kind of helping us get that out every year, so great information. But again, we're always open and willing to real, you know, real, the realty community, the builders and developer community, any information that we can provide, we're happy to give them, you know, provide that for them and, and continue to develop and build on those relationships. So again, the more we can do by getting the information out to people upfront, I think it helps them have a better understanding of the process overall and how they can maximize things like the exemptions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, let me check to see any other commissioners. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, we'll come back to Commissioner Clemens. Yes?
Is there any way to give us a, a figure on the tax dollars saved through the frozen exemption? Do, do we have a way of tracking that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at our chief appraiser, Mr. Self. I'm not sure if we have that number. Yeah. Mr. Self said with the, the assessor's office, that's something we can certainly generate and will put together. I'll contact Mr. Self later and get that information together.
This question is for county attorney. Every year, we're mandated to put in the newspaper that we have a proposed tax increase. It's language that has to go in, and I, I say, this is the third year that I've said this, every year we put that in the newspaper. Citizens automatically think that Henry County is raising the taxes. This year, it made the news. The Henry County is raising the taxes. Everybody missed that small word that says proposed. And then they come out, they line up, and they say, you guys are raising our taxes, and it's just a proposed increase if we're not meeting our budget. And so when we put that out, I know you told me last year that legally, we have to put that out in the paper. Is there some way that we can put this wheel in there to tell citizens where their tax dollars go? We can show them the potential increase and the amount that it will be? Can we add that to that legislation that has to, to that information that has to go in the newspaper?
We, we could certainly run additional notices. I, I would recommend that we keep those separate. I would, I would hate, I would hate to mess with the notice that the law requires us to publish, but we could certainly ask the paper to publish additional information, or, or even have, you know, an article written explaining it to submit to the papers. But I, I do think, yes, I mean, we absolutely could engage in some outreach to make sure that the public gets the full story. And, and that, you know, that, the law that requires us, even if we're not raising the millage rate, to advertise a tax increase is, is, I think, designed to, and it's going to sound awful, I think it's designed to stir up the citizenry. I think it's, I think it is achieving its purpose and, but I, I do think it would be helpful to, to provide additional information like this, so people know where the source of these increases are from, whether it's property value increases, whether it's a Board of Education increase or someone else. I, I think the citizenry should know where those increases come from.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Sure, a question. In the past, we've used a significant amount of reserves to balance our budget. Is that going to be the case this year as well?
We will have to use a portion of our budget, I think, and don't quote me, but I know it was less than $200,000 out of fund balance. And you're absolutely correct. In the past, we've used anywhere from $9 million to $5.4 million to balance our budget.
So only 200,000 this year?
Yes, sir. But I'll get that number for sure, because I want to make sure I give you the right number.
And we'll still be able to fund, how many new officers?
It will allow us to have, add 20 additional police officers to our staff.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Any additional comments from our tax commissioner and county manager before we begin the public hearing?
Just for the, the public, and I know the media is here, I want to make sure that I give you all specific numbers. In terms of the difference between the 12.733 and the 12.995, I told the board it was 163 million, but the actual number is 164,882,673. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that. And also, I think I've heard loud and clear from the board that we've got to make sure that we continue working with the tax commissioner on educating the public regarding the property taxes and it being an increase. I know sometimes we wait until we're at that point to start that conversation, and so what we'll do is making sure that when we're out and we're out in the community, that we are educating the public on our, on property taxes and not waiting until we're getting ready to set the millage rate. And so that is certainly noted. And then finally, I wanted the board to be aware that there are only 13 counties that have a frozen exemption. And so this is not a state law. This is legislation that was passed by the voters of Henry County. And so just for your notes, I wanted you all to be aware of that as well.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Henry County's offered the full school exemption.
I'm not sure.
No idea.
I mean, I know, again, we do at a certain age, you know, when you get to age 70.
I didn't know if, if we had the number of county, maybe the surrounding counties that offer that as well?
Yeah, something we can certainly look at and, and research. I'm not sure off the top of my head, though. I did want to add that, provided some additional information as relates to your previous question, Commissioner. Without the frozen exemption, if that were to go away, our net maintenance and operation taxable digest would be somewhere around 7.98 million, which would take our mills down to about 11.75, as opposed to the 12.733. So it's about a mil is what that exemption actually equates to, for, just from, on the frozen side. You know, so those are the revenues that are not coming in, because we've taken the step of being able to freeze exemptions for, for individuals. So with that in, that in mind, that's the kind of savings that our residents are, are, are realizing.
Okay. We've got a question and comment from Commissioner Thomas. We'll go to Commissioner Thomas.
Mike, going back to what the county manager stated, the 164,000 plus, the gap that's there, that will come out of our reserves to, to make sure we balance our budget, correct?
That will be an option, but we're certainly pushing our departments to make sure that they are maintaining the, the current budgets that they have. And if you'll remember, this year, we, we trended, or we developed a budget based on a three-year trend. What I'm being told from our financial services team is that we should, by mid-year, we'll have to make some adjustments. And, and to answer your question, yes, it would come out of our fund balance, or if our departments have done a great job of maintaining those current levels and making sure that we're not expending more than what we're collecting, then we'll be able to have a difference, show a difference there.
And you know I'm going to challenge you to make sure we trim some of that fat as well.
Understand.
The next question is, he stated only 13 counties have a frozen exemption in their, their budgets? And I think you stated if we did not have that frozen exemption, we would have an additional $7.9 million that could come in yearly. What would that be? My reason for asking that question is that we are a growing county. Growing tremendously. And as my counterpart has stated over here, we have a lot of counties operating on $200 million, $400 million plus. We have a citizenship that's demanding a higher quality of life from Henry County, from our roads to our fire, to our police. And I am wondering how long we've had this frozen exemption in place? Is it something we can continually afford to do? Are we at the place we need to challenge that, so that we can provide for our citizens what they're asking us to deliver? There, there is, every time, sometime, I have one citizen, every time he sits in traffic, he says, I want you to know where I'm sitting at? I say, yes, sir. And I listened to him. He said, I'm sitting at this point every day. So my question is, if indeed there is a way to challenge this frozen exemption, should it be challenged? Do we need that additional revenue? What could it bring to us to operate on?
So it, it would have to go back to the voters to have that exemption removed. And that would certainly be a decision made by the board if you all would like for us to, to review that and to make some recommendations to the board. Obviously, the, the benefit to that is the additional revenue that we'll be able to capture, but also the possibility of reducing the millage rate. Because right now, a mil is about, is, equates to about $7.49 million. And so that's certainly something we can work with the tax commissioner's office on, on getting some concrete numbers. But I certainly will yield to the board in terms of if that's something you all would like for us to pursue.
So we could actually reduce the millage rate for everyone by reviewing what this frozen exemption is costing us? Because while we're freezing one set, we're forcing another set to pay it?
Yes, you certainly could reduce the millage rate if, if you're going to continue with the budget based on the 164. Now, what I think I'm hearing is that we've got to start looking outside of that 164. And if we're looking at enhancing our services, adding more quality of life enhancements to, to Henry County, then it costs money. And so while there may be a savings on reducing that, you're going to pick it up by adding those additional services, additional public safety, increasing what we're putting in our public safety and DOT budgets currently.
But there's another group paying for that. That's that group that's not, that's the part that's being frozen that we may need to address. So thank you. You've answered my question. I do want to have someone look at that. What would be the increase if we decided to, to bring that before the public? If we decided to educate the public on what those additional dollars would do for us? How that process needs to take place? How we could reduce the millage rate for everyone? That's something that does need to be discussed, and we need numbers on it.
So noted. And Chair Wood, if I may. Commissioner Holmes, just back to your question, the use of fund balance was 295,000.
You done Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Clemens, and we'll come to Commissioner Barnes. Okay. Commissioner Clemens?
And Sherri, just based on what Commissioner Thomas was saying about the frozen, I don't think that anybody wants their stuff to come unfrozen. I don't want mine to come unfrozen. But these new people that's moving to Henry County, before they get here, let's take it where they can't get it anymore. So all the new people that are coming in, the more people that are coming in, we might want to look at that it ends, of people who were here by 2019, but everybody from 2020 on that's coming will not have the benefits. And, and that's going to be increased, because Henry County is going to continue to grow. I know since I've been on the board, I've probably approved about 3,000 homes. And as these people continue to come to our county, they don't necessarily need to have, I mean, we, we have to increase our services. So we need, probably need to look at it for the future, but not to take away from the people that are already here.
And I think the other fix to that is, we are really pushing hard to promote economic development in the county. And the more commercial and retail development that we can bring in, then we can reduce the burden on the residential homeowners. So staff is being charged with, how do we get businesses here to relocate to Henry County, so that we can bring to the board in the future years that, hey, we're going to be able to reduce the millage rate as a result of passing that on to our commercial and retail developers?
Yeah, but that's what we're working on. Even if the businesses are coming, that there should be a special tax on them, especially if they're coming with warehouses and trucks. So there needs to be special taxes in place that they can pay as well. So that's why we need to make sure that before they come, in the next box that comes, that there are special taxes on them as well.
Absolutely. We're working towards that as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, let's go back to the frozen tax. The majority of the people that's on the frozen exemption thing are, are homeowners, are actually voters and taxpayers living in their homes. And the ones that are not exempt is the businesses. So they, they would have to pay the additional funds as, as property values go up. And clarification, if you sell your home, then that frozen thing starts all over again. It starts at the current.
That's correct. It would be.
Property value. And it's frozen from that point on, so you don't go back to 2005.
Not just the year they, they buy a new home, but the year they actually filed for exemption.
Right. But it starts new. Anytime somebody sells a house, it starts over new. You don't go back to 2005 and have that frozen all the way.
That's correct.
So if a new person comes in and purchases a home, then they apply for home exception, then that frozen thing starts right then from the time they bought their house and applied for, for home exception.
Right.
Is that right?
That's correct.
So don't go back to 2005.
That's correct.
And if somebody owned their property, and what you was talking about earlier, somebody owned their property in 2005, when this law went into effect, then their property values, and only way theirs goes up is if the millage increases.
Or if they have improvements to their home. If they add on to their home or to make improvements, that addition, those improvements and that, that addition, like the pool or accessory structure, those items, those, 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 those add-ons would not be subject to the frozen provision, only the original house itself.
So then you start all over at that point if you make modifications to your home?
No. You know, you would take the valuation of whatever that additional value of that pool is, or that accessory structure, that would be assessed at the same 40% at the, at your 40% value. And there would no, the, the frozen provision would not apply to that, that improved space. It would still apply to the house. So if you, if you bought your home in 2000, your base year would, whatever it valued at, at 2005, that'd be your, that's to be your base year. And in 2010, you decide to add a pool, and that adds an additional $20,000 worth of value to that, to that property. You would still be frozen at your 2000, at your 2005 assessment. However, that additional value for that $20,000 for the pool, that would not realize the frozen provision. That would still be assessed at the 40, at the full 40%.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Who else? Any other comments from the board? Comments? Okay. Okay, anything else from the county manager, Tax Commissioner at this time?
Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Does that resolution for the board to consider?
Okay, and we have that resolution, and we'll come back to that. So at this time, this is the, this constitutes a public hearing. And again, we will allow our citizens to, who are wishing to come forward to speak on this matter, each will be granted, bless you, three minutes each to speak. And so if you're interested in coming to speak on this matter, we will begin now. So would you please come forward and state your name and address for the record? Again, this is a public hearing, and we're inviting citizens to come forward to speak on this matter, and each will be granted up to three minutes.
Hello?
Good morning.
Don V M.
Can you speak into the mic, sir?
So we can hear, can you pull it?
Don V M, 2470 Lester Mill Road, Locust Grove. One thing that's new this year, and I, I was thinking of the 160,000 that you're short, one thing that's being added in is the commissioner aides. And I, if I remember right, it was about that, that number. If, at this point, I would assume you probably haven't hired those, and I, I think you guys do need some help, but one, one option is to hire one more person that could assist Michelle Weaver with the duties of helping the commissioner. So that's one way you could cut back to, to get, get closer to that number, and still get some additional help, and not force the, the departments within the county to cut back on things that they're, they're doing for the citizens. So you haven't had the aides in the past, you've made it work, you, I'm saying add one to help you out some, but don't go full force, because you don't have the money available right now. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wishing to speak regarding this, during this public hearing?
Hello, my name's Jonathan Bergen. I live at 100 Birch Creek Circle here in McDonough. I wanna thank you guys for your hard work that you do. I know that you take a lot of criticism from us. We like to grumble about problems that we have with the roads, and I get sick of sitting in traffic, and with roads not being paved, and not seeing lines, and lack of sidewalks. I moved here four years ago, and I haven't seen a whole lot of progress in a lot of the areas, and I know that that's a concern from many of us. But I know that we have new schools happening in our area, and we're starting to see some traction with the great work that Ms. Davis is doing. And I'd like to see that continue. I wanna see sidewalks put in, I wanna see park improvements. We have 60% of the parks that we should have in our county, according to the comprehensive plan that you guys took the time to create. And one of the things that was in there is we have sidewalk gap analysis, we have roads that need improvements, we need new roads. A major concern for me is that all of these have unlisted timelines, and that's something that we certainly need to have. And it's something that's not going to happen if we don't have a larger budget. So I'm happy to pay an extra $30 out of my pocket being a homeowner here, and I know that there's a lot that we'll grumble about it. But I took the time to do a little bit of research. So I know that T-Sfloss is not something that many are willing to take hold of. They don't want the increased taxes, but I'd prefer someone else to be paying for our taxes to increase our roads and to benefit us. If we spend $10,000 here locally in the county, and most that are on the pages, on Facebook and other social networks, they'll say, "Well, I purchase everything in Atlanta or outside of the county." So if you're only purchasing $1,000 here in the county, you're only going to pay a minimal amount with the T-Sfloss. So thank you Clemmons and Thomas for taking the initiative to talk about further education for citizens. I think this is a good conversation that we need to have. And only $30, that's just a small amount. I wanna see some great improvements here in Henry County. We have some big retailers that are coming in, restaurants, we have Dave and Buster's coming in, a lot of new businesses and restaurants, and I'd like to see that traction. And that's one way that we can definitely increase our ability to get more revenue, is through the commercial side. So I would like to see that, and the only way that we can see that is by maintaining the properties and showing that we are making improvements to our county. And that will certainly help to bring in more of the commercial developments, and to allow people to see Henry County as our future home. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Stephanie Bodie, 23 Woodline Avenue. I'm also a councilwoman in Hampton, and I just wanted to tell you all, I appreciate you all considering the resolution not to raise the millage rate. I understand it's only $20 to $60 on that portion going up. But what I just wanted y'all to know, with Hampton taking such a large increase on our property values, which is good, I know our homes are selling better, taking the 15, 15%. But on average, a $200,000 home already went up $500 this year. So that's where I was just asking not to do the $20 to $60 more, because our citizens have already taken such a hit on that. But I'm appreciative of y'all considering not raising the millage rate as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward now. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. That concludes our public hearing. We'll invite up the Tax Commissioner and the County Manager to return and open the floor for the board. We heard several things that needed to be, that were questioned and, and wanted to be addressed. So at this time, we're gonna navigate through that. So I'll look to Commissioner Barnes to make a-
Sheriff, you heard the comments about the $164,000. Have we hired the 20 police officers yet?
No, sir, we have not hired the, we haven't hired the police officers, because we were waiting on the setting of the millage rate. What we didn't want to do is not get the millage rate set, and then go ahead and proceed with hiring those officers.
So it'd probably be safe to say we're already probably saved 164,000, 'cause we're a month into Iowa this year's budget, so-
Correct, we will-
So we really not gonna be in a hole 164,000.
That's exactly right. But I will tell you, the chief has no positions currently available. And so I think he's here to make sure you all vote on something so that he can get the advertisement ready to go, to get some officers in. But you're correct. Now, do I believe that we're gonna hire all 20 within the next month? Absolutely not, because it is a process that we have to go through. And we'll, we'll probably have 80 applications, and of the 80, we'll get down to 10 or 15 that can pass all of the tests and get through that part. And so it's gonna be a moving process. But you are correct, we have not expended any funds on those new positions as of yet.
Yeah. And the comments from the council lady from the city of Hampton, property values have went up for everybody. But if you've got that home exemption, then your taxes remain the same, far as the county goes.
Are you talking about frozen provision?
Yes.
They will continue to go up until you get to your, again, whatever your base year. So it depends on what your base year value was.
Time you bought your home.
That's correct. So if, if it hasn't, so the good news is, if your home is valued less than whatever that base year amount is, you're only gonna be taxed at that fair market value, which is less than the base year. So the frozen wouldn't actually kick in until it get to the point where your value is beyond your base year amount. So, and that's what we're seeing in a lot of cases, where people's values drop so much since, again, they bought their home in 2005, 2006, it was at the peak of its, of its value. It dropped off substantially over the next course of the next five, six years, and now they're bit by bit making their way back up to where those levels were back in 2005, 2006. So a lot of cases, people have seen increases, because they haven't gotten back to that initial base year as of yet.
Yeah. My only other comment is, is something we will have a discussion later about this, is, is we need to strongly consider these impact fees. And, and when new businesses come into our county, we need to address those impact fees to help some of this infrastructure that we're facing now. We need to, I mean, if they wanna come here, they gotta pay. And so that's all I can-
Any other questions or comments from the board of what you've heard this morning? Okay, just a couple of comments I, I'd like to make. First of all, we understand that this whole millage rate discussion is based on the budget that the board has approved. And I remember over the last couple of years having to go through this budget process, and I wanna commend the staff for at least every year, making sure that we've got the right budget to provide the services to the constituents based on where we are. And I do agree that as this county continues to grow, that means we've got more moving in, that includes residents, a lot of residents that are moving in. We've got to understand the impact it's having on the services. And at the same time, we've got to understand that it is good that if we can bring in the right businesses, and yes, it is good that we're beginning to look at other revenue sources to offset the costs that are having, but I do believe that this board is working very hard to make sure that we're being fair to citizens, educating them. The staff, I wanna again commend you for looking for the efficiencies, and where we need to be to make sure that we've got the right budget, that we don't have excess money wherever we don't need it. But at the same time, we're looking for ways to be more efficient as an operation. So we've got to continue to improve in this process, and I'm glad to hear of the proposed millage rate that says, let's continue to, to, to keep it where it is, continue to look at how we're gonna be efficient, and how we're gonna continue to grow this county in a way that we need to address it. Now regarding the whole concept of our infrastructure, the roads, yes, we've got to have continued conversations with the county and the cities to take that comprehensive transportation plan, and to add some actions to it. And so I'm glad to hear that we're continuing to, to focus in on that, to work with the cities, and to make sure that we're moving in the right direction with sidewalks, road improvements, 'cause that's gonna be a journey that we're gonna have to continue, especially as we continue to grow. So those are my comments regarding where we are today. I'm very open to continue conversation. I wanna thank the citizens who are tuning in, all of those that have been making phone calls, that are trying to get answers to questions. Please stay engaged and continue to hold us accountable as we continue to address this county as it moves forward and moves quickly with the growth that we're experiencing, 'cause it is not easy to manage coming from the past and moving into where we are in such a fast pace. But I'm very proud of where this board is and where we're going. So at this time, any other questions or comments from the board before we open the floor for a motion? Okay, hearing none. You have the resolution ahead, in front of you. The floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I move that we set the millage rate at 12.733.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions, comments, revisions, or thoughts? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion? Please raise your hand. Okay, it is a 6-0 passage. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So that concludes our, our special meeting today to speak specifically on the millage rate hearing, and also the adoption of our millage rate. We wanna thank everyone who's participated in this. Is there anything else for the good of the group that the board needs to discuss? Okay? Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I just have one comment. I, I've got, a couple of weeks ago, before our computer system went down, I was talking to Deputy County Manager Brad Johnson about a community restaurant initiative. We were discussing how we're going into the restaurants in Henry County, and they're becoming less and less clean. They're becoming less and less appealing on the outside. So we were discussing putting a community restaurant initiative together, because our computer system went down. I think you did get it up on the website, Brad, before it went down, or is it on the website now?
It was on social media. Released it on social media on how to contact the Health Department, and how to make some complaints, and the next steps. If you do find any issues while you're out, who to contact.
So what, what this is, is community members can get involved in what we're calling the Henry County Restaurant Initiative. We wanna raise the bar for the restaurants in our communities. We wanna go into those restaurants, and we don't want scores below 75 in our community. And if they are below 75, we're gonna talk about what can we do? How do we report? How do we make sure that the restaurants are raising the bar, because it affects our public health when we're going into restaurants and it's not clean? So if you want to get involved in the Henry County Restaurant Initiative, please text 470-585-1704. Again, that's 470-585-1704, and say, "I want to be involved in the Henry County Restaurant Initiative." And that is so that we can raise the bar on the restaurants in the community, know how to report a restaurant that is unclean, unsanitized, unasanitized, unsanitary, and make sure that we're raising the bar. We do not want to eat in nasty restaurants in Henry County.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? All right, consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you all.